Are we?
Good to go.
Good to go, May. Yep.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the September 21st, 2020 regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. It is wonderful to be back in the boardroom and to see everybody again. For those who are with us tonight by way of Zoom, welcome. We're happy you're here. With that said, we're gonna get going. Please, before we stand for the pledge, just to remind everybody in here, cell phones on airplane mode or turn them off just to avoid any interference. With that said, please join me as...
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Roush.
Yep.
Please take role.
President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Roush is here. Treasurer Friddell.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
And Member Lotterback.
Here.
All seven are present.
All right, full board tonight, fantastic. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Items 2.1 through 2.6 on the agendas you guys have in front of you. 2.1 is the approval of the minutes from the August 17th, 2020 DEI workshop meeting. 2.2 is the approval of minutes from the August 17, 2020 regular meeting. 2.3 is a list of persons recommended for employment for the 2021 school year. 2.4 is the following staff members have announced their resignation effective of the listed dates. 2.5 is an approval requested to authorize legal payments to Thrun Law Firm for $390 dated August 27, 2021 for professional legal fees. And item 2.6 is the approval of payment school system bills for the month of July and August 2020. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Phil. Any discussion, items 2.1 through 2.6.
Hey Scott, in our consent agenda, it's not listed as any one of those items that you just read off. But we do have the Barton Mallow summary of the bond that is listed in our packet for information, which we have talked about before. But with that being, is it, when we are approving the consent agenda, are we approving that in any way? Or that, because it doesn't even show up on the agenda, so...
I would imagine if it's not listed in the consent agenda, all we are approving as we sit here, Brad, is items 2.1 through 2.6 is identified on the agenda in front of you.
But then that would be the very next item, which there isn't. So if it's not part of...
Was something left off the written version versus another? I'm confused, I'm sorry.
We have it in our packet as part of all of the backup from the bond. But it's not listed in the agenda. So I want to make sure that we are not approving that as part of our consent agenda and/or if it is listed for information only for us to review on a monthly basis. I think it should be listed as for information.
Are you talking about the executive summary report?
Yep. It's in all of our board packets, but it's not represented on the agenda.
Is it different than you're saying in months past? I guess I...
No, it's been the same.
No, it's been that way for a long time, but...
So I think it's always been for information.
Right, right. It's always been for information.
Where it's listed is the question that's being called.
Yes.
And I don't think it matters.
Okay. But I would like to have it, since it's part of our packet, I'd like to have it listed as somewhere on the agenda that it's just for information. So it's not perceived that it's part of our consent agenda, so we don't have that issue.
Right, I understand that. Yeah, it is there just for information. So you want a footnote, because we're not bringing financials this month, Brad, because that's, for years, that's audit month and it trails. And so what you're saying is it could stay, let me make sure I say it right, 2.6, and just note that it's for information when we, under the line item, executive summary.
That'd be fine. It should be named out in some way since it's part of our packet, and there's half a dozen pages of critical information for our bond, but it just is for us, for our information, but it's not listed in any way that we, we're not covering any of it.
You can put it any way the board's preferences.
Okay.
Certainly, there's no requirement one way or the other, whatever the board's preferences.
Okay.
So we could, we, we'll have Brian's group and business group take a look, and like we've done other things, and we'll bring it forward and check it before the next board meeting, see what all the board thinks.
Okay. Is that right, Brad?
That's fine.
For the next meeting, we'll move forward as, Phil lined it up as information only or if it's action, requires action, we'll deal with it that way.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So we had a, any other questions, Brad?
Nope.
Okay, so we had a motion by John, second by Phil. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, item 3.1, we have an action item. This is our audit report. Brian. I'm sorry. Oh, Brian, we'll maybe introduce you, Dave.
Go. Yeah, hi, we're pleased to welcome Mr. Dave Youngstrom from our auditing firm Yo and Yo to talk to you this evening. This really is a culmination of many months of hard work by multiple stakeholders throughout MPS, especially our business office. And this really is for us an affirmation of our financial standing in the district, but also more importantly, our financial practices as well, too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Youngstrom, and he will let you know of the results of the very thorough audit that his team members put us through a couple of months ago. Dave?
Thank you so much, Mr. Brian, I appreciate it. Well, first off, I want to thank you on behalf of Yo and Yo, we're here presenting to you in September. It's been, it's been a very crazy year, and I'm glad school is going as well as can be expected, and things are going well for you guys. The one thing I do like to say, I mean, I want to thank the bright business office, Brian and Lori and their entire teams, how they did this year. You know, this audit this year went very, very well. It was so smooth, even with all the extra work that had to be done throughout the process and through those processes, with all the stuff that happened over the summer to get ready for school, all those changes, all this, the Department of Education sending us all the different changes, all the funds coming through, trying to figure out where those go, and they did a great job this year. And it's really, a credit to them to be able to be here in September to be able to present this audit. It's not a small district, and there's a lot of moving parts, so I want to thank them for all their help with that before I get going. I'll try to talk slow, I talk fast anyway, but hopefully this will slow me down a little bit. If there's questions, please feel free to stop me whenever you want, and I'll just kind of start getting through it. All right, the first, the first slide here is really, it's our, what you're hiring us for is we're issuing an opinion on the financial statements. Management is responsible for the financial statements, we're issuing an opinion in relation to those. And we are issuing an unmodified opinion. It is the highest level of assurance we can give in a financial statement. It is a clean opinion, and that's what you're looking for. So wonderful news for that. Take a look at our major fund, which is our general fund. Taking a look at their balance sheet, which is a snapshot in time as of June 30. And you can see our cash position is at $24.2 million in 2000, up about $4 million. Our money due from other governments is about $9.2, down about $1.4, and that's mostly state aid and grant money coming in. And then our other assets were about $100,000, pretty consistent from the prior year. So overall, our asset position is up about $2.4 million from a year ago. Looking at our liabilities, our biggest liabilities, we have our money owed from us for the state of Michigan at the $9.2. We owe our employees about, just over $7 million of that dollar, those dollars. So that's up about $300,000 this year. And our other liabilities are also up about $300,000, so about 2.1. So that's up about $600,000. Our fund balance itself increased by about $1.7 million this year. So we did add to fund balance. Looking at our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, that's basically our school operations. Our revenues are down about $700,000 this year, about 1%, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Expenditures are up about 2.1%, so up from 79.5 to 81.2 million, so about 2.1%. So our change in fund balance this year compared to the year ago is down 2.4 million. So we spent more money and we didn't get as much revenue in. Overall, our fund balance increased from 22.7 to 24.4 this year, and we'll talk about that. So done pretty well in the prior year. Just comparing with budget, then what the board approves is the budget, right? So we always want to take a look and see what our comparison is to budget. You can see our revenues are down about 3.3%, and our expenditures are down about 5.5%. We did get a last minute news from the state of Michigan that they were not going to allow us to count some of our revenues this year, so those have been deferred. So that's one of the reasons why the revenues were there. But mostly costs were not incurred this year. And obviously, we shut down things a little bit early here, so we had some savings there as well. And certainly, we did spend that over the summer, and we'll talk about that a little bit as we kind of move forward. Always look like it, kind of look over year over year to see where we are. And our revenues, again, down 0.9%, and our expenditures up 2.2. So we are spending more money every year, this year, so... Where we get our revenues from, easily consistent. Our state monies is up about 1% this year to about 2/3, 66%. Our federal portion is down about 1%. Inner district, which is mostly the enhancement, millage, and special ed money, is up 1%. And our local property taxes are down 1%. So everything's within a percent of each other, a little bit of shift towards the state and away from local. This is just a kind of, I think, a neat slide back from proposed lay was passed in 1995 was the first year it was enacted. You can see the blue being the state and the local being green there. It was 50, 50% federal funding from the state and 31%, or 46% local. So $31 million came local, 33 million from the state. And if you look at 2020, you can see how big that blue is now, 2/3 from the state and only 26% local. So we've really been leveraged more with the state of Michigan, more reliant on the state for funding and the things that go with that over time. And again, so that's when proposal A kind of changed everything. Looking at where we spend our money, and we do spend most, almost all of our money on our employees when you look at it. And that's 86% on salaries and benefits of employees, plus another 5% of purchased services. And that's up 2%. The salaries and benefits is up 2%, and that's $2 million more we paid our employees this year, which is, which is good to be able to do that. Purchased services were down about 1%. Supplies and materials, again, down 1%. We didn't have that last part of the school year as part of that. And capital outlay was down 1% as well. Looking at the slam chart, when we break it down from proposed lay to now, we spent 38% in supporting services in 1995 and 58% in instruction. And now we're spending even more on instruction, 64% and 34%. Seven, 98% of those in those two categories for us now, compared to 96% of your, way back then. And overall, another 1.8 million this year went into instruction, so those dollars and those salaries that we're all going for, towards instruction almost. I do look like, like to look at it on a per pupil basis. I think, again, it paints a picture, because we talk about students all the time, and we relate those dollars to it. And you can see we've had a really nice, healthy trend for the last five years. The sixth year, we were spending more than we took in. But these last five years, and you can see that funnel kind of narrowing there to 10.7 to 10.5. And I think you'll expect to see based on the budget you adopted, that it's going to maybe cross over that line this year. At least the budget has done that. So what do we have left after our revenue expenses is our fund balance, our rainy day fund. People always ask, what do you need a rainy day fund for? Well, who would have thought?
Here we are.
How many millions of dollars did we spend over the summer to get ready for school to open? Millions and millions of dollars. And if we didn't, we were in a very good position because we've been financially, very financially minded when we do our decisions, not greedy or anything like that, but really having a rainy day fund that we're going to draw on to be able to take care of our students' needs is really what's most important. Our total fund balance compared to expenditures as of June 30th now is 30%, and that's up 1% from a year ago. Our unassigned is up from 23 to 24%. And the number of days we can operate based on our fund balance is about 110 days, and that's six more days. Now, minding you, you spent, like I say, millions of dollars over the summer of this fund balance to get everything ready to go. So I'd expect to see a little different picture when we get back together next year, and again, no one will be surprised by that, but... I used to sit at my school board and say, you know, why do you need fund balance? Why do you need fund balance? You'd never know, but this is why. And then you'd get hit by kind of a double lane. That's kind of the end of the general fund, and I think it's kind of good, you mentioned something earlier about the bonds and watching those as we move along. And just see, series one right here, we're, we're basically done with series one as of June 30th, pretty much took in 74.5 million, spent out 74.4, and that process is moving along. The new bond, you can see we just started last year, had a little bit of expenditures last year, and then last summer, we spent a lot of money, and we're going to, but spent a lot more this bond this year. We're looking at $41.5 million in revenues, and that includes interest and earnings on those. And we spent just under 14, just over 14.5 so far. And again, that's as of June 30th, so if you look all past, in September and October, you're going to have some much bigger numbers. But I think it's important to see that, because the bond is super important to the public. Any questions on the bond or anything? So it's not just about the numbers, it's about our controls and our financial statement controls and our federal testing as well. We do compliance testing, we do internal control testings, and I'm pleased to report again, for three years in a row, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no material noncompliance, and no management comments in the financial statement area. Wonderful job. Controls are excellent. One of the things we looked at this year with almost all of our clients, obviously went through some changes during COVID. So we looked at controls pre-COVID, post-COVID, and during COVID, to try and say, okay, where are good things fallen through the cracks? Where are we looking through things? So we dug in deep with some of those things and looked at some different areas than we have in the past and tested some systems three times to make sure everything is being reported properly, and we found no issues. On the federal award side, however, we did have our major program, which was nutrition, and we have an unmodified opinion there. We have no findings. What we do have is a management comment for food service fund balance. And we have too much fund balance. When all this stuff happened, we started getting money in. We couldn't spend it fast enough. And what happens? The Michigan Department of Education, US Department of Education refuses to issue a waiver for that. There was nothing more we could have done to spend this, and we had to include it someplace, so we included it as a management comment to follow your plan, work on a plan to reduce your fund balance in food service. Even though districts, and that's what we argued with them, there's nothing you could have done to spend that money any faster. So again, I want to make sure, even though it is a management comment, it has to be in here because it's a compliance issue. But again, there's not, nothing you could have done to correct that. The team was already aware of it ahead of that, proactively looking to do something with it. But again, when March hit, who knew what was going to happen? Then all of a sudden, the US department started sending food to us, and that increased our revenues quite a bit. So I just want to make sure, any questions on that? Because it's kind of complicated there.
So how are we able to spend that money moving forward? Do we spend it on food service? Is that what they're telling us?
It can only be spent in that line.
Yep, has to be spent on food service.
So would that be meals or could that be kitchen upgrades as well?
So Lori and Brian has submitted a plan to state of Michigan that has a little bit of all of that. And so, but as Dave said, when you go from serving 100,000 meals to 400,000 meals, plus it was an increased pay, increased rate back to us. USA upped that with March to the close of June. And you get, we probably got most of that revenue in May and June, it just was no time to spend it.
Right, right.
So yeah, the spend down is pretty nice thing to do, and it's a pretty big number. You'll see some cafeteria furniture, I think, if I remember, some kitchen equipment. And yes, we have the ability to hold meal prices as well.
Excellent, okay.
And again, I give them a lot of credit for doing that, because we did need that money to feed those, to feed the community, is what we wanted to do, and that's what, I think schools did a great job in that area.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely addressing a need, and that's the first thing I said when everything said, all these kids going to eat. And that was great. It was great to see.
Right.
So the future challenges, and we've got COVID-19. We sit here, and I'm so happy to see people. I've been doing these virtually for a while, and it's the same message, but I just, it's just not the same. And again, you probably feel the same way, but certainly, COVID-19, it's going to be with us for a little while, hopefully it goes away sooner rather than later, but we're making do, we're doing well, and I think that's all we can hope to do. Virtual learning and enrollment down the road is going to be a challenge, right? We, we, we cut our teeth in the spring, figured out some things, and now we've got a good plan in place, we're following our plan. And then what enrollment does down the road, we'll see. The state funding as it relates to that is pretty questionable. I mean, for next year, it looks okay. They took care of some things and made sure we're getting our money, which is nice. And then again, we'll see what happens down the road. Our pension obligation, which is paid through payroll, and we can't really do much about it, I just think it's big numbers on your statement of activities, so I always want to put it on here. Your pension obligation from the state of Michigan's pension system is $156 million. That's up 13 million this year. It was up 17 million a year ago. So it continues to go up. We're paying about 40 cents on every dollar to our retirement system for our employees' salaries. Along with that, the post-retirement healthcare obligation is at 34 million, and the state of Michigan is paying us some extra money to pay that down, and that went down about 4 million. And then with all this learning, we spent all this money to get our schools ready for safety. We did a lot of things with technology over the last several years, but we do need a revenue stream down the road to make sure we can care of that. And so that's important as well. And those are kind of the things I have. Anyway, I'd take any questions.
No questions, Dave. Thank you so much. I know this was, was hard to put together, and it's really reassuring and comforting to know that as a district-wide effort, we're doing it right. And I know you mentioned early on that, you know, we're probably going to have a different picture to look at next year, but for now, we're going to relish it and savor the flavor because we're going to put that money to good use. We've been, I think, outstanding stewards to this point, and we are ready to meet these future challenges you listed head on. So I'm excited about that, and I know you put a lot of work into preparing this for us, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I guess I do have one question, too. Are you aware of any pension obligation legislation that we should be watching or advocating for?
Advocate, I know you, this guy advocates every, every time he goes there, but there's not much we can do at this point with that.
So they did put some fixes in back in '07 and '11, or somewhere in there, and those that, the legislators kind of want to see if those are going to eventually right the ship. So the actuaries say they will, 2030, 2035.
30-year plan.
Yep. So it is a state-owned, they took it over in the, probably with proposal A in the early 90s. And it was fully funded at the time, but with the aging population, the retirees, and less workforce coming in, a little bit like social security got upside down very quickly. So the state put some of those fixes, they hope to work, there could be more in the future.
Okay.
And they're pumping more money into it and sending it to us. We'll see if that has, if they're able to keep doing that. That was my big concern. Snyder did a lot of that.
Yes.
And we did it last year, too, so that was good. So hopefully they can continue it.
Good revenue years, they take a little and pay that debt down a little faster.
To try to make sure that we stay in compliance with that. So at some point, we hopefully will hit that tipping point where we'll start going down. This is the first kind of hiccup in the market the last couple of years, finally. Things were going pretty well in the beginning of that, and now there's been some little fluctuations in the measurement time, so. And when the return on the investment is not high enough, that's when those liabilities tend to go up.
Okay. Well, I guess my takeaway from the whole audit is the audit went fabulous. I love to see no material weaknesses, no deficiencies, no compliance issues, no comments. All that, you know, makes me very proud of Brian and Lori and the finance department and the whole team really sticking together and making sure that we could do the best we can. And when things get really tough, like this pandemic, you know, we were able to respond. And if we weren't set up in this strong position, things would have been a lot different. And, and I thank Mike and his staff for setting us up for success there.
First audit of the year, and the district size, when you close the books on June 30 and you have it done in a short period of time.
Yeah, done in August, basically.
That's a feather in their cap as well.
It's great. Glad to be proud of.
Now we just need a budget for next year.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, guys, this is an action item. I will accept the motion to adopt the audit report.
I move to approve the audit report.
Support.
Motion by Pam, support by Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Is Brian going to join us now?
He's on your screen, ready to go.
Okay. All right, Brian, item 3.2, Chromebook purchases.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. We'll start this one with just a little bit of a walk back in history to set up the context of why we're bringing this to you tonight. All the way back in April of 2020, the board approved for us a purchase order for 625 Chromebooks. At that time, we were getting a little bit of ahead of the curve because we knew that device procurement was going to be difficult. And those devices were ordered with the aim of having a replacement fleet for our current sixth grade Chromebooks, which are the oldest Chromebooks in the district. So we put that order in early, hoping that we would have it for the beginning of this year. Fast forward to June of 2020, and we put in another purchase order that the board approved for us for 250 devices, and that was proactively getting ahead of the devices that we know were lost in the flood, but also the devices that were being lost during our COVID-19 shutdown as well, too. And we put both of those purchase orders in, which we felt was going to give us a strategic advantage in getting these devices as soon as we could. Well, little did we know that the immense impact on procurement that COVID-19 and the associated pandemic would have, would delay the issuance of those devices to Midland Public. We were kind of surprised that they weren't here by the beginning of the year, and the story is continuing to unfold. The vendor that we ordered both of those purchases from, we continue to get delays from them, and it's looking more and more like those two purchase orders would not have a likelihood of getting here until the very late winter or even hints of early spring. And to us, that's just unacceptable because we need these devices and we need them now. So a credit to Mr. Dizik and his technology team, they've done a little bit of exploring for us, and their success in finding a vendor that can deliver a bit quicker for us is why we bring this action item to you tonight. So tonight, we are seeking approval from you to issue a purchase order to Firefly Computers of St. Paul, Minnesota for $362,309, and that is going to be for 1,200 Chromebooks. The makeup of those Chromebooks is to replace the sixth grade fleet like you did back in April, your approval for that. The 250 that we had talked about with the flood and with COVID shutdown, and there's an additional set of devices in there as well to enhance our backup fleet, our loner fleet per se, that we have become more reliant upon now that technology is even deeper ingrained into everything that we do. And so we know that we need to enhance that fleet, and getting this purchase order in will help us in providing ongoing and continued technology even when a student's device does go down. The pricing for these Chromebooks is $295 per device, and we will also need to purchase along with this 350 management licenses. We don't need all of the licenses for the Chromebooks because we did procure some out of the previous purchase orders, so only 350 of those are needed for $23.74. This is part of a national bid contract, NCPA Technology Solutions Contract Number 1-43. This does follow your board purchasing policy because this is nationally bid. And if approved, the expenditure for these will come from multiple funding sources. We'll be using our ESER, Esser Funds, which we call COVID money around here, some of the federal grants that we have. We also were blessed to get a grant from the Midland Area Community Foundation, which were blessed to get a grant from the Midland Area Community Foundation, which is on your agenda later this evening for Action for Approval. And we also have some great community partners in the Kowasi Kwanis Club that is currently fundraising to help with the cost of these devices as well, too. So we would appreciate your consideration to approve this purchase order this evening so we can get these devices ordered. And we are hoping that if we can get this purchase order in tonight, that we would have these computers in early November is our hope.
I move to approve item 3.2, Chromebook purchase.
Support.
Motion by Pam, support by Mary. Any discussion on item 3.2? Brian and Dave, fantastic job getting a hold of these. Way to put our students first instead of waiting for the other orders, which we apparently have no idea whether they're going to be filled. We know for sure. Brian, are these, is this order going to cost us more than the previous order?
It is a little bit more expensive per device. It is a different model computer as well, too. And I won't pretend to be the expert on the actual spec of the device. That's what Mr. Dizik is for. But it is a different model Chromebook, and it is a little bit more expensive of a device. But again, procurement for us is of the utmost importance right now, and we're blessed to have great funds to be able to help offset some of these costs.
Since we have Dave in the room, I think he nodded his head that most of that increases just because it's a little better model.
Better machine. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, I did notice one thing, and I'm sure there's a reason. We need 25 more licenses to make sure that we're covered because the first order was 250, second order 625, that's 875. 875 from 1,200 is 325, and we're buying 350. We need 25 more?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I was told by the backroom to come to the podium. We always try and keep a little buffer of those, Brad, because when we rotate out old ones, Google doesn't allow us to keep using the licenses we have. Once you retire a machine, they have to be retired. The licenses are retired as well. So we try and keep a buffer of about 25 so when we can swap things in and out, so we don't get license locked.
Sounds good.
And, you know, when they're small like that, Brad, you wouldn't see them because they'd be below the threshold. But since he's purchased them in, with the computers, that's why it's there. That's why you haven't seen them before.
Yeah, we're pretty tight on licenses, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Big thanks to our community partners as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kwanis and Midland Area Community Foundation.
Okay. Alchemical was involved there, too, on that one. I don't want to miss that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, all in favor of item 3.2? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have item 3.3. This is information only, our Extended Learning Plan. Penny.
Penny will be coming on your screen any minute here, and she'll probably share a document. So it may take a second to switch from.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm going to share my screen. Are you seeing a slide that says MPS Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan? Great, thanks, Brian. So I'm happy to be with you tonight to share the third plan that Midland Public Schools has had to create in response to Michigan Department of Ed requirements. This is the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, and it is in response to Public Act 119, which was issued in late August, August 20, actually. So a bit of a tight timeline, given that pieces of this were actually due on September 15, but the full plan is due October 1. The good news, let me advance my slide, the good news is that much of this plan is really a compilation of work that we have already considered and been planning toward, given that we were pretty forward-thinking in the spring about the multiple modes of learning that we would have here at Midland Public Schools. So this really addresses the face-to-face model, the virtual, and the hybrid model. The intent of the plan is to ensure equitable access to learning and services regardless of the learning mode. So we're pleased about that, given that we have a high demand here to ensure equitable opportunities to learn. The plan really called for us to consider things such as access to technology, how we would consider special programs like CTE and dual enrollment, how we might support some of our more vulnerable student populations, such as our English-language learners. Again, many of these things were already part of previous plans, but they asked us to reaffirm our commitment to that equitable access and to document it once again. The unique and special parts of this particular requirement through Public Act 149, the two pieces that we have not done before, is setting academic goals, and we'll talk about that in a moment, and a defined way that we need to monitor student engagement. I want to pause for a minute, though, and bring your attention. I've mentioned this is Plan Number Three. Jeff Jaster presented at a recent board meeting the Preparedness Plan, and that plan is still valid, and we're accountable to all the provisions of that particular plan. We also brought to you last spring, when we moved to remote learning, our Continuity of Learning Plan. And that plan is also still valid, and we're accountable to the provisions of that plan if we do need to move to remote learning, either in small pockets, or across our district, or potentially across the state. We've revised that plan. We learned a lot last spring in what full remote learning needs to look like. We took that learning and have revised the plan. So we have those two plans, plus now this third new Extended Learning Plan. So I wanted to make sure that you understood the distinction. This is really a way to bring those together. You will find, if you go out to our website, starting tomorrow, and look at this plan, we have heavily referenced back to those other two plans and have linked pieces of that throughout. So as I mentioned, I want to focus particularly on the fact that we are holding firm to the key outcomes that we're after during this unique pandemic learning period. We want to emphasize care, safety, and health of all of our students, ensuring their overall well-being. We want to provide a consistent, meaningful, and engaging experience for all of our students to promote maximum growth and learning, regardless of their mode of learning, and of course, that equitable and accessible experience for all. The unique piece, one of the two unique pieces of this plan, the first being that we were required to chart goals, academic goals that could either be growth-focused or achievement-focused. We are using the NWEA assessment, and it made the most sense for us to align ourselves to two growth goals. And the legislation particularly asks you to look at grades K8 for math and ELA, so that's what we've done. It also requires you to have a mid-year status update and an end-of-the-year status update. So I will be coming back to you prior to the deadline of February 1, and again, prior to the end of the school year, reporting out our progress with these two goals, which is to show improvement, to show improvement in student growth in math and ELA grades K8. And that data will be reported out in aggregate, and then we will disaggregate that by our particular subgroup populations. The other unique piece of Public Act 149 and this plan overall is the need to host reconfirmation meetings. So 30 days upon approval of this plan, and I should note that this will be submitted to the Department of Education and the State Treasurer for approval. Upon 30 days after that submission, we are required to publicly share with you updates to the plan, any public parent or family comments that we've received about the plan, and we need to share out the two-way interaction percentage rate of our students. What you'll see off to the side on your slide there is just a quick snapshot of what the template could look like for that monthly reporting. We'll bring that to you at a board meeting, and then we will publicly post that on our website on the transparency link. I do want to remind you, like those other two plans that have come before you previously, this plan is a living document, and we will continue to update and adjust based on what we learn about student success during this period of time, and of course, in response to any additional guidance or legislation from MBE. So our next steps, it has already been submitted to the ESA for review, and I've not yet heard back if there were any further inquiries or clarification needed. Once Mr. Searls does that, he will then move that on to the state level, and we will get a response letting us know that it was submitted by the October 1 deadline. We will post that on our district website. We will conduct those monthly meetings and be very public and transparent about the data that we're required to share. And then again, you'll hear from me on the particular goal data at mid-year and at the end of the year. What questions might you have that I can answer, or Jeff, or Brian, or Mike?
I guess the thing that, I guess, you and I have talked about the growth goals and the using of the NWEA assessments, but I'd like to share that as well with whoever's watching. So to me, it's important that you, this whole time, Midland Public Schools has been looking at educational outcomes and growth and measuring those outcomes. So I didn't know if you could say a few words about how we're doing that.
Sure. NWEA is a fabulous tool. It's nationally recognized as one of the top tools to really inform instruction. And as much as we've talked about it tonight as a way to report out and be held accountable for student growth, I think the power of NWEA is actually that it provides teachers with that information immediately that they can respond to in the classroom to meet individual student needs. That's really what we're after. It also does help guide us, the big picture, as it's aligned to state and national standards in preparation for Mstep. So yes. And Pam, what I'd like to do is, when we come back with that mid-year update, the goal update, we could dive a little more deeply into NWEA at that point and share a little bit more of the underpinnings of it. But for those listening, I'll just let you know that it's a wonderful tool. Our teachers are very excited. We are at full implementation grades K8 this year. We had started on this journey almost two years ago now, in a pilot fashion, where we had some at the middle school and some at the elementary school. And based on that feedback, realized that it is a tool that teachers and students and parents can really benefit from. When you take this initial assessment, as students are just doing right now, it projects a target for them. And so students can create a goal, monitor their own progress toward that goal, which is really a high-effect size strategy, and students can have that sort of agency over their own learning.
Great. Thanks, Penny.
Yeah.
Penny, as far as engagement goes, how are we doing with the online and virtual engagement of the students? Are you getting any feedback to that end?
You're asking, what's it looking like so far now that we have three weeks of school?
Yeah, yeah, we're nearing a month into our return to school. I'm hearing wonderful things about in-classroom engagement. I'm experiencing that as a parent, and I'm hearing it on multiple levels. But I'm hearing kind of mixed reviews in terms of virtual engagement. How is, what kind of feedback are you getting back from either parents and/or teachers?
I would say overall, I think we're holding our own and doing quite well with student engagement. It's a, it was certainly a transition period, and I would say particularly more challenging for our youngest learners in early elementary to get that classroom community established and build that connection with their teacher and their fellow students. That's what really we want in order to, they want to, we want them to want to come to school every day. And when you build that sort of relationship, I think that's where you have the higher levels of engagement. I think we're making progress every day. Virtual elementary teachers met just last Friday for the collaborative and are feeling more and more positive and optimistic about that level of student engagement. There certainly are some misses. We have some families that we are reaching out to this week, identifying why we're having some sporadic connection and participation in online learning. But overall, I would say it's strong. I've not looked at the specific attendance data yet, so I might defer to Brian or Jeff. We're monitoring that more closely, but I would suspect it's on par with our face-to-face.
Great. Thank you very much.
Then Penny, if you don't mind, can you talk a little bit more about our special education monitoring during this time? I know the Board PAC talked about IEPs, 504s, et cetera, but will we see data on an aggregate level on a monthly basis in this report as well?
I believe our intent right now is to report out the two-way interaction of our entire student body, and potentially then disaggregated by those who are full virtual and those who are not full virtual. We have not yet developed the process, I don't believe. And I really should stop talking and turn this over to the people who know most, which would be Brian or Jeff, specific to special ed. But you, what you will see from us is at least that higher level. That's what the legislation requires us to report out in terms of interaction. Your question might have been more specific to special ed. Jeff, what might you add there? Megan, can you unmute him?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So Phil, just to clarify, I'm not sure I understood what data report out you were asking for in particular. Is it just?
Well, I, yeah, I'd probably characterize that. Yeah, I would characterize it just maybe as a general update, maybe not specific data. But how are we tracking success with with our special education students?
So that's going to look much like it would in the face-to-face, where, you know, there will be specific goals for each individual student outlined in their IP. We did ask for families who had students with IEPs who chose to go virtual, that those IEPs be amended to reflect that change. And in some cases, it might have meant there were some different goals. But generally, goal areas don't change, and so they would still be working towards the same goal areas in most cases, collecting the data, and then trying to determine if students made progress through a very similar process that they would have used in school, face-to-face.
Phil, in general, special education students will be taking still the same NWEA assessment for the academics first. Now, there's some exceptions with disabilities. The other piece to keep mindful is what we'll be reporting out is required to you is basically attendance. Interaction rate is how they assess the attendance and participation.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, Penny, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next up, item 3.4, Shining Stars. We've got a lot of them. Mike?
Yeah, long overdue. So in March, we had selected some shining stars, but did not recognize them formally with the school closure at that point in time in the board meeting. So the first ones I'm going to do are from March of 2020, and long waited for the recognition. The first shining star from March was Sarah Doughty. Sarah joined MPS team in 2013 as a fourth-grade teacher at Woodcrest Elementary School, a position she continues in today. Sarah earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree from Saginaw Valley State University with a major in elementary education in 2013. She went on to earn her Master's of Education degree in Educational Technology from Mary Grove College in 2015. MPS began a new support position, support system for students last week, and called report and respond. Sarah has graciously agreed to be one of the five active allies in their building for Woodcrest students who need support and are listening ear. Sarah was nominated for the shining star by an MPS staff member. Among their comments were the following: Sarah Doughty is a very warm, accessible, enthusiastic, and caring teacher. Sarah exhibits expertise in numerous subjects. She is teaching and spends time continuing to gain new knowledge in her field. Sarah presents material in an enthusiastic manner, installs a strong hunger in her students to learn more on their own. Sarah's students may not remember everything she taught them in fourth grade, but without a doubt, they will never forget the shining star teacher who went above and beyond. So congratulations to Sarah. And our next shining star in March of 2020 was Karen Drolli. Karen is an office professional in the Counseling Department of Midland High. Ms. Drolli joined MPS team in 2015 as a media center paraprofessional at HH Dow High. In 2008, she joined the staff of the Administration Center as a paraprofessional in the Information System Department. In 2014, Karen moved into her current position as office professional at Midland High. Ms. Drolli was nominated for the shining star by MPS colleagues. Among their comments were the following: Karen has had a key part in the website building process. Out of the whole district, Karen has had a wonderful and smart idea to improve the function on the front and back end of the site. Our website is managed by MPS, but the development side is handled by a web development company who specializes in ADA-compliant websites for school districts. She had a concern that other districts were facing, and her idea had the developers custom-create a feature to help all webmasters. I value Karen and encourage her to continue to submit and voice ideas. Ms. Drolli is valued member of the Chemick Counseling Team. She approaches her work with a can-do attitude. She takes initiative when it comes to making positive changes in the office. Ms. Drolli has a great rapport with students, staff, and family. She is a team member who's willing, always willing to help and give 100%. Congratulations to Karen. And our September shining stars, we're going to recognize a pretty good group here because from March to September, we had quite a bit going, if you recall, with food service and some of the other sports that go on in the district. So we'll start there. Let me go there. We'll start with Mr. Wenzel. Matt Wenzel will be our first one. Mr. Wenzel joined the MPS team in 2017 as Assistant Principal at Midland High School. Before coming to MPS, he was a principal with Bay City Public Schools, an assistant principal, and dean of students with Saginaw Public Schools. Matt earned his Bachelor's degree from S4SU, his Master's degree in principalship, and school administration certification from the Michigan Department of Education. Matt was nominated for a shining star by an MPS colleague. Among their comments were the following: In the course of the past few weeks, Matt has put in countless hours completely revising the school master schedule. His creativity, grit, and student-first mentality led to a schedule that accommodated the request of many stakeholders as possible. It was evident that he met this challenge with calm persistence, never losing focus of customer service mindset. His efforts are worthy of commendation, and he has proven himself as an invaluable member of the Midland High staff. Congratulations, Matt. And all that was due to the dual scheduling we had to do this year. Our next shining star, Tracy Reed. Ms. Reed joined the MPS team in 1998 as an office technical professional to the coordinator of Language Arts and Foreign Language. Tracy currently serves as administrative assistant to two associate superintendents, Brian Bruton and Jeff Jaster, and provides support for the number of MPS departments. Tracy earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in psychology from Kenyon College in 1990. Tracy has a rich history with MPS. She attended Cook Elementary, Jefferson Middle School, and graduated from HJ. She attended Cook Elementary, Jefferson Middle School, and graduated from HH Dow High. Tracy's father was a beloved Midland Public Schools middle school teacher for 30 years. Tracy was nominated for a shining star by an MPS colleague and one of their comments were the following. Tracy has been instrumental in procuring personal protective equipment for all of Midland Public Schools. Her tenacity, organization, and work ethic positioned the district to open with all necessary equipment in place in an extremely difficult purchasing environment. She spent countless hours organizing and delivering equipment to stakeholders in need, easing some of the difficulties of carrying out the numerous components of the return-to-school plan. Tracy was also a source of assistance for surrounding districts in helping them find reliable vendors and in-stock supplies. She quickly became the go-to expert within the region, relied upon for advice and guidance. She deserves recognition as one of the district's unsung heroes bearing increased responsibilities brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic. Congratulations, Tracy. And our final shining star for September is Amy Crowley. Megan, did I miss something? I'm not sure, but I'll read Amy's. Amy Crowley. Ms. Crowley joined the MPS team in 2013 as a paraprofessional at East Lawn Elementary. Amy moved to Central Park Elementary to continue her work with the East Lawn Eagles as they made the move to Central Park Explorers. Ms. Crowley earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in psychology from Hope College in 1996. Amy was nominated for a shining star of our 17 MPS colleagues. Among their comments were the following. Amy is the office pair at Central Park. She is the first face many people see when they enter our building. She always has a smiling face behind her mask and a positive attitude. She is patient, empathetic, and welcoming. She is a wonderful team player and is essential to our daily lives here at Central Park. One thing that stands out the most about Ms. Crowley is her warm nature and her kind spirit with all of CPS families and staff members. As a new staff member at CP, she welcomed me with open arms. She is a class act. Amy has worked tirelessly over the summer at Central Park to help prepare for the year and help everything run smoothly. Amy is always willing to step in and help. She goes above and beyond her job. We appreciate her dedication. She is vital to things running smoothly at our school. Amy is truly a shining star at Central Park Elementary. And I missed some, so I have to go back and see. That wasn't the final one and you'll bear with me a little longer. Our next shining star is Tina Malzon. Tina has been with Chartwell's for 16 years. The past eight years, our district's had the privilege of having Tina lead our meals program as MPS Chartwell's food service director. Before beginning her career with Chartwell's, Tina was the owner-operator of her own 150-seat restaurant in Cadillac, Michigan. Since Tina took over the MPS food service program, her team has been very successful in growing the catering program that includes the daily staff meal choices and seasonal specials. They host many caterings each year for groups of varying sizes, from very small groups to the very large group up to 500 people. Their catering have included robotics, regional competitions, new school year staff get-togethers, and the Gerstacker Awards. And all these are our food service because of the numerous meals that they served this year, on the road, by the way. Chef Jake's career highlights is our next one. Chef Jake is the MPS Chartwell's food service executive chef and has been with Chartwell's for two years. He has 10 years of experience in the food service industry. Before coming to MPS, he worked as a private chef, as director of food service for a senior care facility. Chef Jake is a graduate of Le Carnes de Bleu with a culinary certificate. When it comes to MPS Chartwell's catering, Chef Jake works with the group to develop an innovative appetizing menu with budgetary boundaries. He does everything within his power to make sure caterings are delicious, beautifully presented, and delivered to set up before the start of the event. Chef Jake makes life just a little easier for the host. And we have Jackie, who's also from food service. Jackie is the MPS Chartwell's administrative assistant and has been with Chartwell's for two years. Before coming to MPS, Jackie worked as a substitute teacher in the accounting field and holds a Bachelor's of Science degree. Jackie staffs the administration center office and is calm, friendly voice callers and visitors talk with when they contact MPS Chartwell's food service program. Tim, Jack, and Jake were nominated for the shining stars by several MPS colleagues. Among their comments were the following. Tina and her team have truly been on the front line as essential workers since the very beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Within just a few days of MPS learning of the mandated closure in mid-March, Tina and her team had a grab-and-go meal plan in place for Midland area children ages zero to 18. They were ordering and managing semi-loads of food service throughout the week, getting Chartwell staffers who were willing to work during this uncertain time in place and organized, coordinated the preparation and dispersment of thousands of meals for the Midland area children every week, followed very strict safety and nutrition protocols, and mandated so much more. Families were able to pick up nutritious breakfast and lunch meals all across the community MPS schools as well as via school bus meal pickups. While most of us were working remotely during the winter-spring COVID closure, Tina, Jackie, and their Chartwell's crew were on the front line working many, many hours onsite, providing meals for children zero to 18 who may not otherwise have had access to nutritious meals. Between March and June, we served over 347,000 meals. Congratulations to Tina, Jack, and Jackie.
Well, I think we should stand and give an ovation.
Yeah. Well, it's a shame they couldn't be here with us tonight, virtually or otherwise, but what an amazing group. And I'll tell you, I wish we had more stars to give out because I think a lot of people don't realize what we've really accomplished since COVID came to be. There's a lot of truth to the phrase "it takes a village" and I think our MPS village is strong. We have really done some remarkable things. And so for all of our unsung heroes who have not been named as a shining star, I just want to tell them thank you and that we appreciate them as well. Those are a lot of the bus drivers, the outstanding pares, the teachers, the cleaning service that comes through and cleans our rooms every night for our students, the food service folks who have not been mentioned tonight, and of course, our administrators who have done an absolutely Herculean effort to get us up and running and get things going as smoothly as they have the last three weeks. So thank you, everybody. That said, we are now on to a request to address the board. I know we have Dr. Bender and it looks like maybe 13 other participants on Zoom, so before we hear from Dr. Bender, who is first in line, let me just say this. The board is here to listen to comments. Your voice is being heard, your issues are being heard, but we are not here to engage in conversation for many reasons, the most important of which is we aren't necessarily prepared for what you're going to say and we want to get you the best answer possible. So we will take what you say under advisement and we will return to you with an answer in short order. So that being said, Dr. Bender, if you're with us, the floor is yours.
Okay, have I been unmuted?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I just wanted to bring to the board's attention some recent developments. The news out this weekend and follow-up, actually today, was about the acknowledgement from CDC that transmission of the coronavirus can occur via aerosol. The importance of this is that the guidance about physical or social distancing that has put so much emphasis on six feet is undermined when this type of transmission occurs. And so in indoor environments, especially those without good ventilation, there is increased risk of transmission when people are closer together. And so I wanted to bring to your attention, obviously, the acknowledgement that the school system has made that, well, it's a goal to achieve, the six-foot recommendation will not be possible in all cases. Now, another item that I wanted to throw a spotlight on this evening was some guidance that came out from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Wednesday of last week. And this is guidance about modifying in-person instruction based on taking into account the county-level epidemiologic risk as well as viral spread indicators within a school district and within school buildings. Presumably, you will have received this document from your representatives at the county health department. So since July, without, with very few exceptions, Midland County has been in the very high-risk, or sorry, the high-risk level. From July, sorry, September 1st to September 10th, it was very high risk. So high risk is defined as 40 or more cases per million population in the county, very high, 70 or per million population. So taking into account that the county-level epidemiologic risk and that there are now, as reported today in the superintendent's communique, at least two known confirmed positive cases. Obviously, that means that there have been some buildings with known cases in staff or students. It's not specified in the communique whether there's any evidence of ongoing transmission in the buildings. But I wanted to highlight again the guidance from MDHHS about modifying for in-person instruction to mitigate risk. This step four of this document talks about how school districts should work to adjust educational methodology based on recommendations for the combination of the county-level risk and viral spread indicators. So when a county is at high risk and there are buildings with known cases, then there needs to be some consideration of reduced density in affected buildings and there needs to be also a determination whether or not there should be some pause, short suspension in in-person instruction. Or if there's evidence of ongoing transmission, then consideration of whether there should be a 14-day suspension of in-person instruction in affected building. Even when there are no cases in school buildings, the MDHHS document is recommending that in-person instruction should occur with strict mitigation measures. What does that mean? Strict mitigation measures means that all required, all strongly recommended, all recommended measures as outlined in the My Safe School of Michigan 2020, 2021 Return to School Roadmap are examined and to the greatest degree possible adopted. So there has been in the last couple of weeks considerable uptick in burden of Z's in Midland County. Part of that can be attributed to the ongoing outbreak at Northwood University, but there continue to be cases that occur outside of that university setting. Lastly, one thing I wanted to mention that was an area of concern as I was reviewing the school's plans was with respect to choir and band. The document that was shared prior to the beginning of the school year stated that we expect that band and choir classes will meet outside as much as possible and that vocal music and instruments that cannot be played with a face covering will most likely be practiced or performed outside. I hope that you might have seen coverage of the report from CDC in their morbidity and mortality weekly report that talked about how there were 87% of a group of choir members who developed COVID-19 after attending choir practice with one symptomatic person. Choir and wind instruments should really never occur in an indoor setting during the pandemic. So with that, I will thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. We appreciate your comments. I believe Mr. Sherrill did want to correct one point that you may have misstated from the communique and he's going to do that right now.
Communique expressed that we had two close contacts who were not close contacts of students that occurred outside of the district, so we presently don't have positive cases. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. Dr. Bender, if you can still hear us, you're still with us. Thank you very much for your time and your comments. We do appreciate you joining us tonight and offering your opinions. Are there anybody else? Is there anybody else in line to address the board? No? Okay. All right, next up, FFO. We have a study committee minutes from September 8th of 2020.
That's me. The, we went over the 1920 audit. Mr. Youngstrom and Ms. Rolfe reviewed the 2019-2020 audit with the FFO committee. Topics included various sections of the audit report such as fund balance, net assets, financial statements, the single audit, bond work, and governance communication. The audit proclaimed an unmodified opinion, clean audit, and a healthy general fund balance. The second item that we dealt with was dam failure class action. Representatives from legal firms Powell, Miller, and Posnet, Dyer, Kaner, Schefsky, and Thompson Napoli Law presented proposals to represent MPS in a class action suit to reclaim present and future physical losses related to the May 2020 dam failure. Mr. Sherrill and Mr. Bruton discussed the following topics with the committee. Return to Learn finances, a summation of the revenues, and initial project, projected expenses related to the MPS return to learn plan was shared with the group. The next meeting is October 5th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Next up, item 5.2, Mr. Bruton. Brian with us?
Yep. Thank you, appreciate that. So for item 5.2, we have three gifts this evening for information only. The first is $250 from the Estimative Charitable Foundation to help us offset some of the 2020 flood damages over at HH Dow Media Center. The second, $500 from Cabot Corporation for parts and equipment for Midland High Robotics. And finally, $600 from SK Communications to help offset some of our ongoing hotspot costs. We certainly appreciate their generosity. And if okay with you, Mr. McFarland, I'll move on to 5.3.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So for your action tonight, due to the size of the gift, we're asking you to officially accept $79,500 from the Midland County COVID-19 Response Disaster Relief Fund. These are the monies that we had discussed funneling through the Midland Area Community Foundation with support from Dow. And these funds are intended to be used on a couple of different items. One, the Chromebooks that we approved earlier this evening, hotspots, general school supplies, earbuds, and also document cameras. So with your approval, we will accept the gift.
I move to approve item 5.3, the gifts totaling $79,500.
Support?
Motion by Pam, support by Mary. Any discussion?
Oh, what a huge thank you.
Yes.
Just to support our kids in a time of need.
Yeah, we have an amazing community and community partners, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, Brian. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, human resources, item 6.1, Mr. Jaster.
Thank you. So in memoriam, the board and staff would like to extend their deepest sympathies to the families of Mr. Joe Palmer Jr. He passed away August 20th of 2020. Mr. Palmer taught English and social studies at Central Intermediate for 36 years and he retired in 1986. Also, the family of Mr. Gary Burgess. He passed away on August 17th, 2020. Mr. Burgess taught music at Jefferson Middle School and HH Dow High School for 25 years and he retired in 1996. And I can move on to 6.2 as well.
Yes, please.
It's okay. And for 6.2, the following staff member has announced retirement as of the effective date listed. And so this teacher is Ms. Carmen Kessler. She has taught special education at Northeast Middle School for many years and her retirement was effective June 12th of this year.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is item 7, and this is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 7.1 is information only, letters from the Board of Education to the following organizations. First, SK Communications Group LLC, the Carlson Weir Family Foundation, and the Islamic Center of Midland. Next up is item 7.2, these are letters to the Board of Education. These are letters to the Board of Education from, the only one listed here is a FOIA request from the Mackinac Center. Next up is item 8. This is our scheduled activities, information only, just a list of our remaining Board of Education meetings, as well as dates that are tentatively approved for January into, looks like the end of June of 2021. Finally, we are at our study discussion session. Are there any board members who would like clarification or would like to further discuss anything from the agenda tonight?
Scott, I had a question. In FFO, you had a presentation from a couple of law firms. Is that something that a school district can participate in that?
Yes.
All right. And if we chose to discuss that, would that be a closed session of the board to discuss a lawsuit or joining a lawsuit? Or is that, how would that transpire?
I believe, you know, closed is very regulated. I'd have to do some research, but I think it would be if you're receiving a legal opinion on your direction only, if you can go in the closed. So, it was two presentations to join it. One was much stronger than the other presentation to sign on. But I know neither one of them requires necessarily board approval or action to do as well, but we certainly, I think, benefit from at least signing on to, and there's no, you know, typical no-cost recovery, they take a piece of that, and you're joining a large group of individuals, maybe as well as municipalities. So, but yeah, I think, you know, that's pretty regulated, reasons why you go in the closed. I'd have to read it all, but I believe probably only if we're getting a legal opinion on that.
Okay. The other question I had was relative to the bond. I wanted to find out or make a request when Daryl or one of his counterparts would come back and give us a full presentation. We haven't had one in quite a while of where we stand and his PowerPoint and things that he's done in the past. We haven't seen one of those in quite a while, and I would really like to see one.
Sure, we can work on that piece of it. We certainly can go over the summer projects from this summer that have occurred and what maybe is to be bid out November, I believe. The RFP will be going out next year's projects, but it's slowing down, the dollar amount's slowing down, so a much smaller set of group of work than you once had, but certainly. And I gave you in the Friday letter an update where we stand on the summer projects. And so, without reviewing all of them now, we were able to recover from COVID and get everything done, minus the tennis courts, which we will get recovery from the contractor as we use their bonding capability, because he failed to deliver those projects on time.
All right. Brad, before we work into Mike's comments, were you going to mention anything about the MASB Leadership Conference?
Brad, you said Brad.
I mean Scott.
You meant Scott. I was not going to address the--
Could I?
Sure.
All right. MASB's annual leadership conference is November 5th through the 7th this year, and it's virtual, and it's free to all members of the Board of Education. There is a delegate assembly every year. We have a delegate assembling, we need voting delegates. However, we don't need to register this year since everything is virtual. But they do need a quorum, so it's important to participate. So I just wanted everybody to know that November 5th through the 7th is a virtual opportunity for us for Annual Leadership Conference.
Thanks, Pam. Okay, any other comments before we turn it over to Mike? Mike, floor's yours.
I'm going to be really brief. I would give a big shout out to Fred Janoski and Nicole Swan from our Health Department, and what wonderful partners they are in working with us and guiding us through that. And so we're, you know, I like to call my daily phone call sometimes with Fred, and so he's just fabulous if you've met Fred and his guidance in moving us through this, and we'll stay very close in contact with him. His calm leadership and moving through this COVID is very, very much appreciated by the superintendent, and I'm sure all of them in the county who's been working closely with Fred on that, so I wanted to give a shout there. Brad took a little bit of the bond work, so I'll just go right to reminder that we are going to bring a performance contracting proposal still to you after, they're working on it all summer, they've been measuring the energy data to get more specifics, if you remember the presentation we had, and he'll bring that to you. We have to put a formal RFP out in October, November, and then it'll come to you. And we certainly will use the FFO process flowboard to make sure you have enough information, ask questions as we go. If you recall, that was about this building and the building next door, and how can we offset this energy cost? And we could go to LED lighting to sum it up, to get some energy savings, offset those costs going forward. With our audit report tonight, I think we're in a pretty good position still to take on that. You know, energy bonds, they often claim they pay each other off. They were very upfront that we were very energy efficient already, received a lot of rebates, Phil's question. Probably not an offset in there, so there will be some costs that you're taking, but I think it's worthy for LED lighting and energy savings and changing this old HVAC that's going to die and get the other building down next door. That was the plan there. We got to just keep moving on our buildings, you know, lots and lots of stuff that was left out there, you know? The bond was originally 200 million seven years ago, but we couldn't pass that, and so we took part of it on. But more aging buildings, more work to be done.
Okay, before we wrap it up, just want to thank everybody for tuning in tonight. Looks like we've got about 12 viewers left, so, folks, thank you very much. I will now take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mary, support by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. It's good seeing you.